Seven o'clock, six to nine.
And Councilor Bowns stepped on for seconds, coming back, but don't wait for him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on April eighth, two thousand eight, not two thousand nineteen. We'll begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor Andrew Hosmer in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the ministers tonight's meeting are being kept by our city clerk, Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that at this time she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowns?
Counselor Bowns is absent at the moment. I'll note when he joins the meeting.
Counselor Whitman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
Here.
Let the record show that at the start of the meeting tonight, five of our six counselors are present, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. Also note for the record that the city council is joined tonight at the front table by city manager Scott Myers and by the city finance officer Glenn Smith. First order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. Before you counselors, you have the minutes to our last meeting on March twenty-fifth. Those were distributed by the clerk on March twenty-seventh. No changes have been noted to date, unless there are any at this hour. I'm going to declare that the minutes to the meeting of March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, are accepted as submitted by the clerk. We have no consent and action items tonight, so we'll get right into citizens' comments. Now is the appropriate time on tonight's agenda for anyone who is with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on the agenda. That description meet anyone, a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. If it is on tonight's agenda, there's a place later in the program for that. See anybody moving, so we'll move right along. We have one interview tonight. David Stamps is seeking reappointment as a member of the Highway Safety Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Stamps, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you could officially identify yourself and tell the council why you seek reappointment, please.
David Stamps, twenty Pine Brook Lane, Laconia, N.H., oh-three-two-four-six. Does that do it? This will be my third term, and it's usually not very active. Our principal business in the past has been simply reviewing federal grants for the police department, mostly concerning for impaired drivers and other things. It brings in extra money that covers overtime and benefits as well as officer hours. They've gained probably several thousand dollars a year over the last years that I've been on it. This most recent meeting, we did discuss the proposal, I think, that Wes will present tonight, and we all concurred and support him and his endeavors, so I'd like to keep it up. I bring a broad range of planning, as if any of you read my application, of course you all did, indicated between the ten years on planning and Main Street and graduate of the Police Citizens Academy. To say nothing of ten years with the community emergency response team, I bring a broad experience to this position.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Stamps? Speaking on behalf of all of us, we very much appreciate your service to the city over these years, not just in this particular board, but in general, and as keeping with company with the company, with city policy. We do interviews on the first meeting of a month, and we do the elections on the second meeting, so we will not be voting on this tonight, but at the next meeting, which you're welcome to attend, but is not necessary.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, public hearings. You will recall at our last meeting, counselors, I opened a public hearing on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one nineteen dash thirteen dash zero-two. The actual ordinance is on page, proposed ordinance is on page thirty-nine of your packet, and I recessed because that hearing had not been properly noticed or was not on the agenda for last. It had been properly noticed before the meeting, but did not make it onto the agenda. And so I recessed that public hearing. So at this hour, I'm going to reopen that public hearing on ordinance oh-two at seven oh-six P.M. And again, that ordinance is printed in its entirety on page thirty-nine and of your packet. And I would ask at this point in time if there is anyone who wishes to address tonight to the council ordinance zero-two amending chapter one nineteen of the Building Construction Ordinance, Article Two, Adoption of Standards. If that doesn't excite anyone, I don't know what I could say that would. No one? All right, thank you. I will close the hearing at seven oh-six P.M. And note for the record that we will take this business up tonight, again, under unfinished business. The actual adoption of the ordinance are moving in that direction. Next up is fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget overview. I recognize the city manager, Scott Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to make my way up to the podium for a brief presentation, but we set the agenda up with that rousing public hearing just before my budget presentation so that, you know, mine would be elevated a little bit and be a highlight for you, so. We'll see how that works. So hopefully you've got something in front of you on your TV screen, and hopefully we get it there. There we go. This wasn't working earlier this evening, and I was going to have to wing it. But I did not do any paper copies of the PowerPoint. Most of what I'm going to go over is at a thirty-thousand-foot view, the first six or seven pages of your budget book, which you'll get when you leave here tonight, have some narrative and statistics, and that's where this comes from, so all of this information you will find very easily in your budget book. But I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the city's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty. A lot of effort goes into this, both from the school board, school administration, school departments, staff, as well as on the city side, through all of our department heads. And it's really an effort that starts back in December with wrapping up the work on the capital improvements committee, with identifying some of the capital projects, and department heads submitting information in, and we start to compile it. We look at revenues, we look at what's going on in the state, we look, you know, listen to what's important to the council and priorities, and try to incorporate everything into a great starting point so that you can all, you all can get into the individual departments a little bit deeper with presentations that we'll be doing. So within this budget book, we have revenue projections, both for the city and the school side. We have the city appropriations, what are we spending this year, and how much are we going to have to raise in fees and/or property taxes. We have the school department appropriation, and what they're proposing to spend on will be coming to you in more detail when they come and present to you in May. We have the state property tax assessment, which is also known as the state education tax. And then we incorporate the Laconia share of the Bownap County budget. So the commissioners and the delegation, the commissioner submitted a budget, delegation approved a budget. We know what that dollar amount is. We base it off of Laconia's apportionment, our share of what we estimate the county, our portion of the county budget to be, and that will get finalized once property assessments come into play, and we work with the Department of Revenue Administration. This fall, we'll be able to finalize that number, but we should be fairly close to it. Also, within this budget, you will find the enterprise funds of the water department and the sanitary sewer department. We also have the internal service fund, which handles all of the city's vehicles, purchases, and maintenance for all city vehicles. We have the ambulance fund, which will be coming into its second year, the motorcycle week fund, which was set up a number of years ago, and we also have the three tax increment financing districts of the downtown, Lakeport, and the Weers. So what are the highlights of this budget? Well, kind of big picture, public safety, always seems to rise to the top, police, fire, ambulance. Education, also a cornerstone of a solid community, looking at our infrastructure, what our needs are as far as replacing or creating infrastructure, and also the maintenance of infrastructure, and then our water and sewer services. The city does have a tax cap that was enacted in two thousand and seven, and that does limit the amount of money that can be raised in any proposed budget through the use of property taxes with two categories. The first one is inflation. We refer to it as the Consumer Price Index Urban, and we take it from the prior twelve months, so this runs from January to December of two thousand and eighteen, and that number came in at two and a half percent, so two-point-five percent is our inflation CPI. That component of what's allowed would allow for a little over one-point-one million dollars in increase in spending through the means of raising property taxes. The second value that we use is the city's net gain in construction value through building permits, and the building permits tie in with the Department of Revenue Administration calendar, which runs from April first of a year until March thirty-first of the following year. So we just wrapped up what we consider the assessing year, and the building permits came in at fifteen million dollars. That was actually about four million dollars less than we were last year, so that equates to a little over three-hundred thousand dollars that'll be available to spend across all departments. And when we say all departments, then the school side, that's the school local, the school state, and on the city side, we refer to that as the city. And also, I need to incorporate the county budget into the overall budget of the city. The county is not subject to the tax cap, so sometimes if they've spent more than their proportionate amount, reductions need to be made on the city side, and the same is true if the city, if the county spends less than their allowed amount, there's additional funding. So one budget collectively needs to come in and be tax cap compliant. And I'm happy to say that this budget is a tax cap compliant budget tied in with the language found in our city charter. So the proposed increase, and that's actually a typo, I changed it on one screen, figure I'm going to mess up one number, but the proposed increase is twenty-nine cents or two-point-one-one percent, and that does, I do have it accurate on a second slide there. So we're a little over a two-percent increase in the amount to be raised by property taxes. Broken down by function, the city could have increased by five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, the schools by seven-hundred-seventy-nine thousand, and the county by a little bit under ninety-three thousand. That's what adds up to the various apportionments, if you will. So what's driving the budget this year? I'm going to go back to last year on one item because the numbers here are a little bit skewed for one reason. You'll recall last year, we had a one-time sale of city property in Lakeport for five-hundred thousand dollars, a half a million dollars. We knew that going into the fiscal year, so we recognized that half a million dollars as a revenue, and we also put it in as an appropriation in the contingency line item, so it's there as an expenditure. So basically, they washed each other. But when you kind of look at these numbers, on the revenue side is the first example. It says that our city spending increased by a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars this year. You really, to round that out, need to add in that half a million dollars in there to make that a realistic line item where we are. So it's valid where it stands at a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, but I want you to know that city spending increases up over six-hundred thousand dollars, and it'll make sense when we talk about the revenues a little bit later. The school spending increases by six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars in the appropriation. The tax assessment decreased on the county level by a little over twenty-one thousand, and this is the other component of it. So our city non-property tax revenue decreased by approximately five-hundred-and-sixty thousand. And again, it's because that half a million dollars of one-time revenue wasn't in the budget book. So realistically, our non-property tax revenue is probably down by less than a hundred thousand dollars, and that's how it does. And again, our assessed valuation increases by fifteen million dollars. How does this break out by the tax rate? Here's the components, and here's the corrected number, which did old here. Yes, so we have a forty-four cent increase for the tax rate of twenty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents over our current tax rate of twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. And you can see the breakdown for city, county, school, local, and the state education tax. So within this budget, what are the big drivers? Wages, more impactful on the school side of the budget because a large, a part of what they do is hire people to help educate the children, so a larger portion of the school budget is related to wages than it is on the city side. But we're still somewhere north of fifty percent of our budget is tied up to people and benefits here in the city. We do have three collective bargaining units in the city, all of them are under contract, so we know exactly what we're looking at for wage increases for the start of the next fiscal year of July first. We do have our health insurance number. We had a not-to-exceed number in the fall. It was finalized on Friday or Thursday of last week. Our not-to-exceed rate did not come down, so we have an increase of seven-point-five-two percent in health insurance premium this year. Again, looking at the big picture with some of the positive changes that the city council has implemented, including increasing the buyout provisions for employees to opt out of city insurance and take insurance through coverage through a spouse's plan, or in some cases, if someone is under the age of twenty-seven, they can stay on a parent's plan for the time being. Since the council made that change a little over a year ago, we have gone from having about twenty-two or twenty-three employees who opted out of the city insurance to Paula, let me know the other day, we were up to thirty-five employees have opted out of the city insurance. So that's a positive change for employees, where we've increased the buyout. It puts more dollars in employees' pockets, but it also is a savings for the city at the same time. The retirement system typically sets rates for a two-year period. This is a rate-changing year, if you will, coming up on this July first, and those rates will be locked for the next two calendar years. We actually had a slight decrease in the rates for all three of the city groups, so that's Group Two, police, and fire, are two separate categories, and then other municipal employees' rates, we had a decrease. So anywhere within the budget that you, we will reflect this, is merely driven by a percentage of payroll. So depending on what payroll is estimated to be by our current employee census, those will be what our retirement system costs are, but generally speaking, we do see a reduction across all lines collectively in that line item this year. Staffing, the only new position that is in here is basically the second half of the funding for the police department officer position, which then allowed the middle school resource officer, which started in the past month to come in. So if you recall, we funded half of the salary and benefits through the budget we're currently working on so that we could implement that higher partway through the year. And I know the chief has shared with you challenges that he's had in keeping it full staff anyway with the recruit process, but, so the second half of the salary and benefits for that police officer position is included in this budget. We have capital listed in the budget, lion's share of it going to streets, drainage, sidewalks, guardrails, all of that good stuff, and the budget is all broken down for you as to what's listed there on a cash basis, and also a couple of projects that we are looking to debt finance as well. And other priorities the council has adjusted either through the year or more recently in the past couple of months. A couple that come to mind is there's money in here for the pearly pond upgrade to it with the maintenance and the upkeep this spring as weather allows. We've also, based on feedback the council had, have an additional twenty thousand dollars in a winter maintenance outside contract line item for assisting with downtowns, no removal in sidewalks. So those are just a couple of examples of some newer dollars that went into the budget. So what is driving our revenues? We're basically, actually, I'm going to back up for a second. The state is in a budget year this year. The legislature is working on a budget the governor proposed back in February. The House, I believe, is wrapping up work in House Finance. Took a vote last week, and the full House will be voting on a budget this week. There are a lot of things that are in flux with the budget process going on at the state. I want to say to you that this is a very conservative revenue estimate. I am not counting on revenue sharing coming in. The school is not counting on additional funding for school aid, rooms and meals tax, catch-up provision was not funded in the governor's proposal, and at this point, I don't believe it is funded in what House Finance did. So we will continue to monitor and see if there maybe is a positive outcome after it passes the House and gets to the Senate, and they reconcile and work with the governor to see if the governor will sign a budget, but very, very conservative on the revenues. Nothing here is a reach saying, boy, I hope this gets approved in the budget. So I want you to know that going into it. So basically, intergovernmental revenue, our two biggest components of that are rooms and meals tax, and what they refer to as the gas tax, which we receive as a highway block grant distribution. Those are basically flat to down slightly. The rooms and meals I just spoke of, that dollar amount is frozen, proposed to be frozen again as opposed to increasing proportionally as is required by state law in the catch-up provision. And then we're seeing on the highway block grants, more fuel-efficient vehicles, more electric cars, better gas mileage. We're actually seeing the number of gallons being purchased declining on an annual basis. So that was always increasing a little bit every year. It's kind of gone level and dropping a little bit. We do show a good-sized increase in motor vehicle registration fees under the license and permits, that's the largest component where the increase is. Other large drivers to that line item include our building and zoning fees, and then also our cable franchise fee. Miscellaneous revenues, again, it's showing about a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar reduction over last year. Again, half a million dollars of that was the one-time sale of property. We also had a large return of close to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from our participation in the Concord Cooperative Solid Waste Initiative. There's a governing board there, and as they find out that they've got too much in reserve or some of the closure of landfills and capping are completed and some of their reserve isn't needed, that gets returned to us, so that's there. The other item I want to highlight is the use of fund balance. I was looking at some numbers that went back to when I first started here in Laconia in two thousand and eleven. I was hired on July first, and basically, for those of you who were sitting in those seats back then, the budget was all but done. It was a budget that was prepared in the spring. I started in July, you voted on it, and on that budget, and again, very challenging economic times, the city used one-point-two-six-eight million dollars out of fund balance, so just under one-point-three-million dollars. And as you heard from our auditor, if we spend that out of fund balance but don't allow funds to either lapse into it or revenues to come in higher than anticipated, you start eating away at your fund balance over time. And credit to this council and past councils that in the eight years that I've been working with you in councils, including what's proposed here, we've reduced the use of fund balance down to what's in this year's budget, which is a sixty-five-thousand-dollar decrease from last year to a new amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So it's basically a half a million-dollar reduction over eight years in the use of fund balance. And all councils that I've worked with should be credited for taking those incremental steps to help get us to the point where we're starting to wean ourselves from the use of fund balance on a recurring basis. As we typically do every year, in June, late May into June, we'll be bringing forward some recommendations, depending on where we end up on some of our line items in various departments. Last year, we recall we transferred some money because of the harsh winter to make up for the shortfall in winter maintenance. We might have some carryforwards of some capital money that we still need but aren't going to be expended or encumbered by June thirtieth, so we want to carry those over to the next fiscal year so we can complete those types of projects. We also do have that half a million dollars that is sitting in the contingency account that we certainly want to address and look at options before June thirtieth comes around to see if there's a use. For those who were on the council a couple of years ago, the city did commit to be setting up a education reserve account to help support the five-year teacher contract that was funded and made up for some lost steps there, and that's something that when we first talked about this five-hundred thousand dollars coming in of using some portion of that to set up that fund. So that's certainly on our table to be working with you to identify what is best to do with that half a million dollars that is sitting in the contingency from that one-time sale of property, and that money's there now. We will be posting the budget book on the city website tomorrow morning. For those who want to do it, we will have copies in print, both here in City Hall and over at the library. Everyone from the city side and the school side looks forward to working with you over the coming weeks and a couple of months as we work through to get the budget adopted somewhere in late June or quite possibly early July, if we're waiting to see what may or may not be the outcome at the state level with the budget. So we look forward to your input as we go through this, as do the department heads. Again, really, this is almost a year-round process. We started this with the capital projects back in the fall, with the individual department budgets back in December, and we'll be working on this all the way through until probably July this year. So it does take a lot. So I want to thank everybody who was involved from the school side, city side. Recognize Pam Reynolds, who helped kick off the budget process with me when we started working on it in earnest in December. Thank and recognize Glenn for coming in in the middle of the game and having a new budget, a new approach, and learning my styles and knowing what I mean, when I don't say what I quite mean, what I want to do. But we got through, and Glenn's done a great job in getting the final document together. So that's what I have for you tonight, and we, again, will have budget books for you to take home with you. I'll be working with the mayor to get together a calendar. Typically, we try to work on our, what we refer to as our off Mondays in the month of May and handle some budget presentations, and on the nights that we typically meet at seven, we would probably look to start at six o'clock, and that's where we will put in a couple of the smaller departments that we can maybe fit in, two or three of them into the six o'clock to seven o'clock hour before we start our regular. So I know you haven't gotten the book yet, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments based on anything I've put out here tonight.
Before I recognize anyone on the council, I'd like to request, following up on what the manager just said, that if you're going to be absent, vacation, whatever, between now and the end of July, it would be good to know that now, if it's something that you've already planned, obviously, from the sense of when we get together to schedule these meetings, it's good to know who's not going to be here on certain dates. So if you could try to anticipate each Monday between now and the end of July, with the exception of Memorial Day weekend, which we'll meet on Tuesday night that week. With the exception of that, if you could let us, let myself or the manager know now with the next few days what dates you might be missing, that'll help us schedule. Okay, questions or comments for the manager? Counselor Whitman?
Just like to talk about schedule for a moment. I think in the best circumstance, it's going to be a very late budget deliberation at the state level, so I think we ought to build our calendar around the latest possible date that we can.
Which would be the second meeting of July.
By charter, we could adopt it as late as the second meeting. We've done that a couple of times during my eight years here. General day-to-day operations continue with no problem. What I don't typically release at that point is any of the capital money, which are usually large chunks and may include some votes for bonding and that type of stuff. So it's not usually an impediment if, you know, to city operations if we do go until the fourth Monday in July.
Go ahead.
The other thing is just in terms of the biggest parts of the budget, the school budget probably later is better in terms of getting a sense of what's going to happen with that.
The school and where their timing and where the board, they did request, and I want it, it's on my desk on a sticky note from Friday, but I want to say it was if our first meeting in May is the thirteenth, the Monday, the thirteenth, that's when the school was looking to come in and present. We can always bring them back for a follow-up meeting, but based on their schedule and where they're going to be that, they had requested to come on May thirteenth.
Yeah, I think, go ahead. I think that's early, but I guess if we can bring them back.
We can always bring them back, and again, I'm not, and I understand, I think it's going to be a challenging year legislatively-wise with the budget, and I don't think, I mean, we may look to adopt the budget, and there may not be a state budget, is a strong likelihood.
And, go ahead. I guess in terms of setting the tax rate and the amount that has to be paid, I appreciate the fact that you've prepared the budget the way you have prepared it, but in terms of our ability to, if there is a budget that has substantial, when I say substantial in relative terms, improvements in both to the city revenue sharing and the school, it'd be good to be able to take that into account in planning what we do for rate increase. I think what you're basically saying, forty-four cents, looks like the top of it.
That would be the time, yes.
If nothing breaks our way.
And if any of those revenues materialize, then we've certainly got the flexibility within that time, and if they were to materialize post-adoption of the city budget at the end of July, we can go in and do a supplemental budget and do, recognize the appropriation and determine what, if anything, we're looking to do with it, either on the school side or the city side.
One last one. On the valuation of the property in the city, we've typically, in the last couple of years, tried. we've typically in the last couple of years tried to perfect what we expect the valuation to be at. What work is planned in that regard?
Well, as you know, we've got a brand-new assessor onboard, an assessor with a lot of experience, but new to Laconia. So within this budget, we did capture the $15 million. Some of that information we really don't have until they start working on the old-to-new values. We can maybe get a little sense of trend here or there. But realistically, it's not usually until the MS-1 goes in, which has a target date of September 1st, that we're really getting a sense. I say this every year. At the end of the day, the tax rate really means nothing. It's the answer to a mathematical equation. It's the amount of spending, but people always want to run and say, what did the tax rate do? It went up, it went down. What really is driving is, what you want to look at is, what would this budget do to the average taxpayer in terms of an average assessed valuation house? So if real estate market continues to be strong and all properties go up 5%, that means you have 5% more value in your house. And the offsetting factor is the tax rate would go down because we have more millions to put into the mathematical equation. Just strictly having assessments go up because of market-driven conditions, and therefore the tax rate goes down, does not reduce anybody's tax bill. It's the answer. Some properties may go up more, some properties may go up less. But at this point, we don't have any strong projections, partly because we've just hired a new assessor, and that position's been vacant since basically the end of November. And it's really too early in the cycle of the assessing year where they kind of freeze their comparables for sales. And going out and starting to do this work ended with the assessing year of March 31st, which was just last week. So we can give you some updates, but there won't be any, there probably won't be any update by the time you go to adopt the budget. We would reflect any of those changes, working with DRA as we do in the fall, to make those changes once we get the final numbers.
Bottom line in that area, if I'm hearing you right, this budget contains a conservative estimate from a tax rate standpoint because you're not significantly appreciating the tax base.
The only thing we've included in there for an increase is the $15 million that we've utilized to it.
It's very likely that when all, when all is said and done, that the, if the spending that's being recommended is identical to what's in the budget that's being presented tonight, I think it's realistic to expect the tax rate that's being projected tonight would actually come out less because the assessments almost certainly will go up to some extent, which will drive the tax rate down.
Sure. And two years ago, we had over $100 million when the market was very strong, and it continued strong last year. So we had, I think it was about a 50-something million dollar increase due to values beside the new building permit values.
I mean, just from prior years, I think though, as much as it is, as you described it, it's helpful to have a sense of it. And I can understand in a transition year, we may not be able to...
We'll work to that. Steve, Steve and his firm...
But in the future years, I'd like to get back to where we were, being able to forecast it.
We can give you some trends, and we'll still be able to give you some trends. Just we're in a transition year. And again, Steve, I know I sent you Steve's background, and he brings a wealth of knowledge. It's just he's coming in and learning our community and our zones and our property classifications. And when you think about the styles of properties, we have everything from the multimillion-dollar waterfront properties on down to the seasonal RVs and the campgrounds that are taxed and everything in between. So we, you know, in between the seasonal homes and the year-round and being a lot of lakefront, we've got probably a lot more classifications of properties than an average community because of those reasons. So I'm not saying we're a difficult assessing community, but we definitely probably have more on our plate.
Anyone else like to offer a comment or question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our reading assignment is set here. All right, we'll move on to the mayor's report. At the top of the mayor's report tonight, I'd like to acknowledge that we have several special guests tonight I want to call attention to. Thanks to Councilor Haynes, who has a, shall we say, vested interest in the subject. And the subject is hockey. We have with us tonight a couple of coaches for the junior hockey league team, the New England Wolves, that's based here in Laconia at the Merrill Fay Arena. As most of you know, we've had the Wolves in, was it last fall, I think?
September.
We had the team in and whatnot. So what's new here is that the Wolves, for the first time this hockey league season, have captured the championship of the premier division of the Eastern Hockey League for teams up and down the East Coast. And we have a couple of the coaches with us tonight. And before I recognize them, I will give you a brief recap here that I have prepared for me by Councilor Haynes, and I appreciate that. So the Wolves' premier team finished this season with 31 wins and 10 losses. In the first round of the playoffs, they beat the Connecticut Chiefs by identical scores of 4 to 2 to move on to the next round. They then beat the defending champion, Boston Junior Rangers, 5 to 2 and 6 to 2 to enter the championship round in Providence, Rhode Island, to face the league's southern champs. There's a northern division and a southern division. And being the northern division champions, they met the Philadelphia Little Flyers in the championship round for the entire league. And our team, the Wolves, prevailed by a score of 4 to 2, as I said, to earn the first championship the Wolves have brought back to Laconia. I'm not the expert on this, but I do know that, I think I can say that the junior hockey league is made up of post-high school graduates, correct?
Yes.
From around the world, traditionally here in New England and around the country, where players who have graduated from high school play in what's called junior hockey league and whatnot in the hopes of signing either professional contracts at some time or attracting a scholarship to a college program, a college that has a hockey program. Individual, in addition to the league championship, there were a number of individual awards that were coming the way of Laconia-based players and coaches. And I'd like to acknowledge those as well. Some of these names are a challenge to me, so you'll have to bear with me. I think it's Dominic Marcinovich, is how I would pronounce it, as a tri, was the Eastern Hockey League Rookie of the Year this year. And four different Wolves were named to the first-team all-conference selections, including Jack Johansson, who was the defenseman of the year. And he was joined on the first team by players Alex Carpenter, Frank Filato, and Ryan Fugue was, the latter two were on the second-team all-conference team. And getting to one of our two guests tonight, the coach and general manager of the Wolves, Andrew Trimble, was named the Coach of the Year for the Eastern Hockey League. So gentlemen, if you would stand up, I think we have two coaches with us tonight. We have Coach Trimble and Coach Kunes with us tonight also. So if we could give those gentlemen a round of applause. And thank you very much for taking time out of your schedules. I saw one of you brought a child with you tonight. So I know it's, it's difficult to work these things in, but we very much appreciate you and what you've done in service to the youth of our community and beyond. So thank you very much, and our sincere congratulations.
Wait a minute. Who was Coach of the Year? Which one of you was Coach of the Year? Congratulations.
Counselor Lippman? Counselor Hamel has...
Yeah, besides all those acknowledgements, the Wolves also do a tremendous job in the community by volunteering to do different things. And I believe they got an award for that last year, was it? And they're big supporters of Christmas Village, which I appreciate. But it's just not only the game that they do, but also what they do in the community, which is much appreciated.
Good point, absolute good point. And that's what they were recognized for when we, when we had the players here last fall.
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to visit us tonight. And we hope to see you again next year. You've set a high bar now.
Yep. And November's coming quick, so we'll see you there.
Councilor Haynes has agreed to take six or seven players next year living in his home. So you're all set on that front as well. Okay, a couple of other notes in the mayor's report. One, wanted to touch on the issue of zoning. The zoning task force had a meeting again last week, and I'll report on that as Councilor Balance was unable to make that meeting. And it'd be normally his duty to report on those meetings to you. But once again, we had an invigorating conversation on this subject, which I appreciate very much, and made headway. And the planning board had its first hearing on this matter last week. And is going to have another hearing at their May 8th, is it? 7th, I'm sorry, May 7th meeting. So assuming that all goes well, this initiative, these two initiatives to start out with should reach the council table here at our second meeting in May. And those two initiatives, to remind you, the first is to greatly simplify what heretofore has been the zoning ordinances in the different zones for the heart of our community, the general downtown area, was divided up into seemed like 100 different zones for what apparent reason we're unable to discern. But, and I think I mentioned to you at our last meeting that the, so two things are happening on that front. One is that the, all these various zones that exist today as far as commercial property in the city are basically being condensed into one. So there'll be one district, which we're calling the Urban Commercial District, will cover most of what we would identify as the commercial areas of the city, all the way from the Belmont Town Line to the Guilford Town Line. And a map of those exact properties is being finalized now. But there is one at the Planning Department, if you'd like to take a look at that, that you could see what it looks like. But it's basically mostly Court Street and Union Avenue and the parcels off of that, with some extension going up North Main Street and south on South Main Street as well. So the committee gave its approval to that overall plan with some minor changes that might be made. So that simplification of commercial zoning in Laconia, hopefully, we'll be able to get to by the end of May if things... And then the second major initiative is what we've referred to as performance zoning. And what we're suggesting is a, originally, we had suggested that three different areas of the city be identified as so-called performance zones, overlaying the underlying zoning for those areas. And the three areas that were identified were downtown and Lakeport Square area and the state school property area. And what's, one thing that has changed there is that the, there is no longer any distinction under this proposal between Lakeport and downtown. So there's no need to have two different areas there. One area would cover all of the, all of that territory. So the commercial, urban commercial core area, the performance zone would be identical to the actual commercial, urban commercial zone at this point in time. So that's coincidental, but it would be an exact overlay, at least starting out of those areas. And to remind you, and then it would include not only the state school property itself, but several properties that are adjacent to the state school, would be the second performance zone. And as, as I indicated the last time we spoke about this, the main purpose of the urban commercial, or I'm sorry, of the performance overlay zones is to say that a developer, builder, business, whatever, could come to the city planning department with a plan for a parcel or a series of parcels that lie within these performance zones. And if they convinced the planning department and planning board that their proposal was significantly to the benefit of the city, as outlined in our master plan now, that we would waive all of the zoning restrictions that might prevent that project from taking place. The planning board would have that. So if they put forward a plan, for example, for a lot, say a 10-acre lot or something or other, and the proposal of what they wanted to build there and how they wanted to build it would require something like 10 variances or six variances from the zoning ordinance to be able to achieve that, that the planning board would have the authority to waive all those variance requirements and say, yes, this is something we want for the betterment of our city, and so therefore, we're going to waive these various requirements. So hopefully, that, the language, exact language for that performance zoning will come before the city council again for the first time in late May. Okay, so that, and then again, if you'd like to become involved in that, and this is a big deal, a really big deal.
It is.
And if you would like to become involved in that earlier than the end of May, I suggest you contact the planning department, and they can share with you the language and the maps and whatnot that have been drawn to date so you can start bringing yourself up to speed on what exactly is being proposed in those two areas.
There is...
I'm sorry?
Just a comment. What we're proposing is a second hearing in the beginning of May at the planning board, the recommendation hopefully to the city council by the second meeting in May. But those aren't hard and fast, and if people got questions, this is a really big deal. It's a big deal. So if you got questions, and you want to take some time, or you want to have, do whatever you want, let's do that. We're, I'm anxious to get it passed, but I'm not so anxious that I don't want to miss anything.
Right. Yeah, we're not trying to rush something through for no apparent reason, but, and trying to be as transparent as possible in terms of what exactly is being proposed so that people will know upfront. This is a significant change in zoning, not only in Laconia, New Hampshire, but probably in the state as well. There are only a couple of other communities really in the state that are at the forefront of this movement now in terms of simplifying and performance zoning. So we're really on the point on this. The last thing I will mention quickly is on the state school front. Coming back to that subject, there is a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 at Risk Frost Jumpway Engineering on Water Street of the Lake Shore Redevelopment Commission. And as I understand it, that's somewhat of a routine meeting for them. But specifically, they have retained a Chicago consulting firm to advise them on the feasibility of the idea of creating a recreational tourism, I shouldn't say athletic tourism, where venue on the state school property to host tournaments from people coming from a wide area and whatnot to Laconia for a soccer tournament, or a hockey tournament, or a field hockey tournament, or whatever. Anyway, they've retained a consulting firm to advise them on the feasibility of such a project in Laconia. And that, the first meeting, at least first public meeting with that consulting group is tomorrow at 1:00 at Risk Frost Jumpway. So if any of you have an interest in that, and talking to our audience as well, and finding out what the latest is in terms of planning for the state school property, I would advise you, that's a public meeting, everyone's welcome. And again, 1:00 tomorrow at Risk Frost Jumpway Engineering. And that's all I have. So we're on to committee reports. And I know we had a meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee tonight. And I will call on Councilor Balance for a report.
Yes, we've been, for the past two meetings, we've had public hearings regarding what I'll call short-term housing, the Airbnb, the BBRROs with respect to this. The planning department and myself, and with the input of members of the committee, have come up with a fairly solid, but not final proposal with respect to an ordinance that we might consider passing. Because we're not at the final stages yet, we don't have a final, what I would call a final product for recommendations. We simply made the recommendation to recommend to the council that you direct staff, the planning department, city manager, whoever needs to be involved, to continue the process to bring... to continue the process to bring, bring us to a final product. We'll probably have another committee meeting prior to any further recommendations. So, because this is a big change. There's not a lot of communities that are doing this, especially in New Hampshire. And I had Scott reach out to see who was doing what, and there's not a lot going on. And it's an area that we need to address, I think. I think it's an area that we can address effectively and accommodate the needs of those folks who want to run Airbnbs, want to use Airbnbs, and protect our city from some of the abuses that have occurred in other areas of the county. So, the country, excuse me. So, we made, the committee read the recommendation to direct staff to complete the process, to come to some kind of final product, distribute it. Then we'll make a determination of whether we want to have another hearing or not. We probably will, and we'll move on from there.
So, from a timing standpoint, are you having another committee meeting then?
No, we're going to wait for the final, we're going to wait for the final product. Dean and Rob are meeting with the City Attorney tomorrow, is it? To review some documents. Out of that will come some recommendations. I encourage any committee member, or anybody from the council, to get in touch with Dean or Rob to get a, an idea of where we're at. I know that I'll want to meet with you guys again before we, before we finalize this and move on from there. So, we don't have a final product yet, but we're moving in that direction. And it's controversial. There are a lot of people, we've got a lot of resistance to this idea. Afraid that we're going to wreak havoc on single-family residential areas. And that's exactly what we're trying to avoid, so. There we are. So, we're asking the council to direct staff, keep moving. That's essentially our recommendation.
All right, so we have no meeting to schedule tonight?
Yeah, no meeting to schedule tonight. I imagine we'll schedule it sometime when we get something like a final product or that we feel comfortable presenting to the public and say, this is, this is what we're considering.
And I think I did attend, as you know, tonight's hearing, and I think that the one thing I would, I would not caution, but add to the three of you who are on that committee is that a subject that Council of Landmen has brought up before, and that would be effective date. In other words, part of your deliberations would need to be as follows. The Planning Department is what your recommendation would be as to when this would take effect.
Well, I think the process, the way it's going to work is we're going to get a recommendation to the council to adopt specific, specific ordinance. I think it then has to go through the Planning Board. And they, they would have to hold public hearings, make a recommendation back to the City Council, and the City Council would either adopt or reject that. So, that's the process, it's all, it's all a way away.
But, what I'm saying is, one of the things you need to come up with a, with a recommendation for is should the ordinance take effect immediately, or should there be, should it take effect on the first of the year, or whatever?
Okay, all right. You're listening.
Any other, I'm sorry, Council Hamill?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and some of it was from what some of the people were saying during your committee meeting. And Dean was saying he was going to meet with council tomorrow, or I believe it was tomorrow.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I was thinking is, as you were saying you wanted to refer it to the Planning Department right away, I would think that after Dean meets with council, if there's anything that's not allowed or things that we are allowed that we didn't know about, that it would come before us first, before going to the Planning Board, to be able to, to, talk one way or the other on that.
No, I envision that that's what's going to happen. I don't envision that it's going to go from here to the Planning Department. I envision we're going to come up with a recommendation, we're either going to hold another committee hearing and make a recommendation to the council, so that we know that everybody's on board with what we're doing. And then, the council would make the recommendation to the Planning, Planning Board to adopt it, or amend it, or whatever.
Okay, because the way you, I must, I might have misunderstood you, but it sounded like you were going to send it right to the Planning Board to make whatever massage you may wanted to do and then send it back to us. And I just thought, instead of throwing the basketball back and forth that we could,
No, no, my, 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 unless somebody on the committee disagrees with this. My, my plan is to come back, do another committee hearing, make a recommendation to the council, and then the council make the, make the recommendation to the Planning Board. So, that it doesn't bounce around a lot. So, that you'll know, this council will know exactly what it is we're proposing in terms of this new ordinance.
Okay. One of the other things that was, was brought up in, about the associations around town, or close living associations. You know, maybe if people want to do that in those areas, that they come here for the permit, but they also have to notify their association of what they're going to do also, might be part of the plan.
I think there's going to be no, right now, I'm contemplating at least, and I know the Planning Department is contemplating notice to a certain group of people. If it's condo association, I, I can't imagine that we would not require notice to the association itself about what the proposal is.
Now, a number of those associations outright prohibit it.
And if they do, then,
That would take precedence over anything we do.
If they, condominium documents prohibit it, they can't do it.
Right.
No matter what the city says.
And basically, it's in your deed saying you can't do it. And so, therefore, it's, that trumps, so.
But I, you know, it's just that, so that, you know, if they do do it, they can't say that, well, the city's allowing me to do it even though I live in the association. Both parties should be,
Everybody should be in approval process.
I mean, I would hope, and maybe, maybe you all just need to repeat it at every meeting, but I hope that there's a general understanding there that, that deeds can make, and properties, so, community, what do you call them, homeowner associations, can make restrictions that are, that are tighter than the city, but they can't make restrictions that are, that are lighter than the city.
Right.
Well, they can, but they have to follow the city's restrictions. I mean, they can make any regulations they want, but they're still bound, they're still bound by the city ordinance.
Right. But if they want to make their ordinances more restrictive, they're free to do that. And some of them do. Okay, anything else on this subject? Any other committee business, Council Hamill?
Just one quick comment, under the land and buildings with the Pearly Pond Maintenance. Who would be the person that's going to arrange a meeting there with the Pearly family and,
I'll coordinate it from,
DPW or Paxton Rec?
Yeah, I'll coordinate it from the city side, since we're, we're searching for a new director over there. And I believe that Council Cheney had indicated that when we saw the weather breaking a little bit, and I don't think today helped.
That's probably frozen again.
That he would reach, he would reach out to family, and we would coordinate the date that way between the family and staff.
Okay, great.
And a consultant of some kind.
They are back, and I've spoken to them, advising them, we would contact them once the weather broke. And, so they're prepared to meet.
Okay, great.
So, prepare to meet on the 4th of July, I think is what we're saying.
We're lucky.
All right, any other committee business? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight?
I think you've taken care of my liaison report.
All right, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the point on our agenda tonight, when we welcome comment from the public on any item that is on tonight's agenda. Anyone who'd like to address the council tonight on a matter that is on the agenda? Representative St. Clair?
Nice tie.
Good evening, and thank you. I was, I was hoping you'd notice, of course.
Who could miss it?
Of course. I just wanted to comment again on the, the plans for parking, angled parking on Beacon Street East and West. As you know, I personally think that they're, it's best to be left alone. And I've talked to a lot of other people, of course, they're not here to back me up, so I won't even bother to tell you what they said, but you can imagine. I think the bump outs, you can save the $66,000 and use that for some good asphalt somewhere. I don't, I, I just don't see it, guys. And, and I don't believe that angled parking there on one lane of traffic is going to do anything to rectify anything that you have concerns about in downtown Laconia. And I say that as a resident. I know you heard about speeding cars, but again, unless there's been another report from the radar that was set up the last time that showed that wasn't the case on either street, I don't see the need for changing that. But, I know you can undo the parking if, change the lines around, if it doesn't work out and it does jam the traffic up. The bump outs, I'm not so sure about. But if you're going to make it one lane, I don't know what the purpose of the bump outs are, because how close do you want to get people in the middle of the road before they cross? And again, $66,000 is a lot of money. And I see, Councilor Haines, you're looking, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, because you were kind of looking like you were, I wasn't sure if you were sure.
I know, I'm listening.
Okay, so that's, and one other thing, this is traffic related, so I hope you'll let me slide this in. I know you're redoing Court Street and Union Avenue. I, I don't know the plans for the traffic lights there, but I hope that, again, this, the, the city uses common sense and puts in left turn either flashing arrows, like they've done in some areas, or you put the solid green ball, so the people can make a left turn after yielding the oncoming traffic, like we're all taught to do when we get our license. I think that would help traffic move along. There's nothing, I work at night a lot, as you know, and sitting at a light waiting for it to trip, and then it trips just as some other poor soul gets there, so they have to wait for me to go, is really backward. So, I hope that a new light is put there. And I'll throw in another plug for the lights going back to the way they used to be when we had a lot more traffic at night, and that is, they go blank at the intersections after midnight or whatever. Some of you remember that, I'm sure our former chief of police does. And also, our former special police officer over there, so that's all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Please identify yourself for the record, if you will, and where you live.
Good evening, my name is Linda Wright, I live on Daisy Gardner Road. We have a unique set of circumstances on Daisy Gardner Road in that, once people pass my house, they either lose cell phone coverage when they're going down the hill towards Lake Nav, or when they're coming up the hill from Lake Nav, then they regain their cell phone coverage. So, we have a real problem with frequent stopping on the road. We're requesting no parking signs be posted on Daisy Gardner Road. The frequent stopping on the roads created a safety hazard for the same reasons mentioned at the March 11th City Council meeting when the speed limit reduction was requested on Daisy Gardner and Lake Nav. The same safety concerns with narrow or no shoulders to pull off the road and the restricted sight distance with the sharp turns and hills. We didn't have the frequent stopping problem when people still had their landlines. We didn't have the problem when there weren't so many seasonal people, renters, contractors, delivery vehicles, going to and from Lake Nav. So, I guess a solution would be to put up a cell tower in that area, but I don't see that happening. So, for now, I appreciate your consideration to post no parking signs on Daisy Gardner Road in an attempt to minimize or eliminate the safety hazard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll address that later on under new business tonight. Anyone else?
Brianna Henderson.
Welcome.
Whipple Avenue. To talk about the proposed parking changes in downtown. As much as I appreciate the effort and attention that you guys are giving downtown and its need for parking adjustment, I'm not in favor of the proposed changes. From a safety standpoint, for one, angled parking is complicated at best on Main Street with the luxury of the reflection of storefronts. We don't have that on the beacons as a little help, especially if you're parked beside, say, a large truck, and you're in a little sedan. It's a little difficult to maneuver that. But also, from a larger standpoint, having less of a piecemeal focus, you know, trying to help where you can here, there, and where not, and look at the condition of downtown as a whole when coming up with long-term solutions for parking, is what I would suggest for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any matter that is on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we'll move on then to the City Manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to go through this report fairly quickly, because probably most components of it I've already touched upon with the budget presentation. So, we've already talked about the assessing value for the year just ended at 15 million. You can see the call data for both the Fire Department and the Police Department. We continue to be busy on both fronts. I've shared with you the past few months on the, on the public assistance funds in our welfare office. We continue to be busy and see increases. The budget will reflect an increase in funds for grocery relief when you have the time to go into the budget. Our property tax and our motor vehicle registrations, we are very solid both in terms of percent collected and dollar amount, so nothing to report there. Nothing jumping out as far as the overtime report goes. There really have been no changes on the impact fees at this point, or any of the, the trust balances. In spite of today's weather, it is boating season, so we are encouraging people to register your boats, do it here locally, money stays locally, watercraft, jet skis, those types of things. And you don't have to be a Laconia resident, we can register anybody with a New Hampshire boat sticker here. On the EMS billing, I need to backtrack. I know I had mentioned to you during the meeting last time that we had a hidden payment that I thought was going to bump up the July payables to the 85,000 threshold. And looking at it a little further over the, the next days, we had already recognized that additional couple thousand dollars. So, the July number still falls a little bit short of what I've been referring to as the 85,000 dollar threshold, but only by a couple of thousand dollars. You can see that we've exceeded that same number in the August timeframe. In September and October billables are bumping rate up on that. So, if you do look at the, the four oldest months, we're at over 82,500 on an average for a month, and that's puts us at the 65% collection rate. Still very solid with the numbers, and as I've shared with you, we, on the expense side, are not coming anywhere close to there. We've, we've not hit, obviously, on some of the percentage of billables. If we're not collecting the full amount, therefore, that hasn't gone out. On a couple of the other items for supplies and some other expenses, we were conservative in our budget estimates meeting, we, we added a little bit more, and we have not come close to overspending or proportionally where we are three-quarters of the way through the year exceeding that. So, I'm still comfortable that it is viable for the city to operate it. You can see in the write-off column, the couple of large numbers that are out in the July, August, September columns. That relates to the fact that those have now gone to a true collection agency. We've got a billing company that goes out and bills. Anybody who, after the 120-day period of making several attempts, who we've gotten no response, no payment schedule, no offer of, I'm waiting for this to happen and then I'll get you a check next month type of thing. If there's crickets from those accounts, they get turned over to a collection agency at that point, where we're still going after them, but it's a different entity who's going after that. Anything that remains in the balance due column either means we still have a strong likelihood of collecting, or we've received communication from folks and maybe they're on a payment schedule of $100 a month or something towards that, but they're making effort, and it's, again, the communication for us and our billing agency is the important part. So, that's the difference between what went into write-offs. It's a write-off in the fact that the billing agency is no longer actively seeking it. It's now a collection agency who is doing that. The last page, winter storm costs. Again, we kind of had a much quieter March, and I'm hoping that regardless of today's frozen precipitation, that April will start to go out like a lamb from this point forward. But, I make no promises about the winter maintenance budget usually until June. So, with that, I will take any questions anyone may have this evening.
Questions or comments for the manager? On? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business. We have four items of new business tonight, starting on page 23 of We have four items of new business tonight, starting on page twenty-three of your packet, councilors. First item is the first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash four relative to the acceptance of personal property donated to towns and village districts per New Hampshire RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E. and to schedule a second reading and public hearing on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. The actual resolution that's being proposed is on page twenty-four, and I will turn to the city manager for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under RSA thirty-one ninety-five, there are a couple of components that can apply to cities and towns. The one before you tonight is thirty-five, thirty-one colon ninety-five E. The second one that will be coming to you shortly is thirty-one colon ninety-five B. B deals with receiving grants or donations of a monetary nature and expending them outside of the budget process. That's the one that'll be coming to you.
This is what we discussed last meeting?
Shortly, yes. And that one potentially looks like, after some review with the Secretary of State's office and we're getting confirmation from the AG's office, will most likely require a charter change because our charter right now basically says that no fund shall be appropriated or spent outside of the budget adoption process unless you go in and do an amended budget. So B might entail the council agreeing that they want to enact B and be able to do amounts of less than ten thousand dollars, be able to accept them as a part of a regular meeting with a process in place where it's noticed in the agenda. You still could choose to have public hearings if you wanted to, but for amounts less than ten thousand, they wouldn't be required. But more than likely, I think we're gonna find out through the AG's office that we're gonna need it to be a ballot question to amend the charter to allow the language of that appropriation outside of the budget to change. Just adopting thirty-one ninety-five B in and of itself would be the first step, but that would put it in conflict with our charter, and our charter is our, our mother governing document, if you will. E, which is before you tonight for a first reading and looking to move it to a public hearing, is dealing with donations of a non-monetary type in an amount of five thousand dollars. This would allow, if you move it to a public hearing and vote affirmatively for it at the next meeting, that items of less than five thousand dollars would be recognized on a regular agenda item, almost like a consent calendar, that they're noticed. I, I mentioned to you two weeks ago, we've got seventy-five bicycle helmets through Coles and Dartmouth Hitchcock that are ready for, we've been awarded, we've just gotta go through the acceptance process. So what I'm going to do in anticipation of there being support for adopting this in two weeks is later in the agenda, having that consent calendar where you acknowledge that we're gonna receive seventy-five helmets so that we can get them going, and the police department has them for use in the bike rodeos that are coming up this spring and stuff. So this is what E does. It deals with donations. You can see the language there is under five thousand. No public hearing is held. It does not commit the city to any additional costs for operation, maintenance, repair, or replacement. So if at some point you accepted a donation of something and it was damaged or Mother Nature took its toll on it, just because you accepted it once is not committing you to replacing it, supporting it in the future. So that's, that's what E is, and that's a little bit of background on what B will do coming forward to you at a different time.
All right, questions before we get to making motions? Anyone? Okay, first motion that would be in order tonight would be to, to move to waive a reading of Resolution number four in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Hammel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Next up would be a motion would be in order to move the first reading of Resolution four, acceptance of personal property donated to towns and village districts per, per New Hampshire RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E. Councilor Hosmer makes a motion. Councilor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote then on passing on first reading Resolution number four. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is to schedule a public, schedule a second reading and a public hearing on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to adoption of Resolution four. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Hammel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling a second reading and public hearing on April twenty-second, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries as well. All right, moving on to our second item of new business is the aforementioned request to resident, from a resident who we heard from tonight, to restrict, to make, I'm sorry, to have no parking on Daisy Gardner Road, which is located in the far northwest portion of the city. So you have the memo before you on page twenty-five tonight, and someone can make the motion to enact this, or we can answer any questions to start off with. Councilor?
Make the motion.
You make the motion? All right, Councilor Cheney makes a motion to approve a no parking area on both sides of Daisy Gardner Road from its intersection with Meredith Center Road to its intersection with Leyton Avenue. Is there a second to that motion, Councilor Bowles? Councilor Lippman?
I guess, as a matter of fairness to anybody who wasn't aware that this was coming forward in that area, like to table it for one meeting to see if there's any other contrary opinion.
You're making that motion?
I'd make it as a friendly.
All right, Councilor Lippman is offering a friendly amendment, from his perspective, to, to table this for one meeting. Take it up again on April twenty-second to allow for any additional public comment. Is that, would you consider that to be a friendly amendment?
I don't. As a matter of fact, I apologize to Councilor.
All right, so you're welcome to make it as a motion then.
Sure. Look, I don't, I'm, just so you understand where I'm coming from, I don't have an opinion against it. I just feel like, from a transparency standpoint, that when we're doing something that one person comes forward with, that it's fair to see if there's any other neighbors that feel contrary.
So Councilor Hammel makes a motion to table.
No.
To our next meeting.
Not me.
I'm sorry, Councilor Hammel. Councilor Lippman, I'm sorry. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, I'll second it, just.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna just lie there.
Not me either.
You're seconding it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so everybody understand what we're voting on. A motion is to table, the motion that's on the table made by Councilor Cheney to our next meeting on April twenty-second. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. I'm sorry?
Can we have a discussion, or is there no discussion on a motion to table? Can we have a discussion, or is there no discussion on a motion?
That's not, not germane, there is no discussion on a motion to table. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. All those against tabling, please raise a hand. So did I miss a vote?
You did. Yeah, I went with them, but I...
So I have, do you want your vote recorded?
I'm gonna go with not doing it right now.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna vote not to table it for right now.
Table, all right. So we have two votes, two, two votes in favor of the motion, four votes against the motion, if I counted correctly. So the motion fails, and we're back to the regular, the, the primary motion made by, by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion on the main motion? Councilor Hammel?
From reading the memo, there's only two houses on this street, and they're both owned by the same person, if, if I read this correctly. So there will be no other people that would come forward, I don't believe.
Might be somebody travels over.
Pardon?
It might be somebody that travels over.
I'm sure there is, that's the problem, I guess. So, I mean, that's my thought of it, so.
Any other discussion? Councilor Cheney?
If I might, I, I spoke with the Public Works Director, who agrees, I, I think agrees, he obviously is here, can speak for himself, but that it's an appropriate place for no, no parking designation. I've driven the street. It's, the, the way the, the road is laid out, it's difficult for people to see in certain areas, and I think cars parked at the crest to be able to use their cell phones could be a hazard to other folks on Leyton Ave. and other places. I, I don't think it's a, and, and I appreciate Henry's concerns, but as Council, Councilor Hammel suggested, there's only two houses, both of them owned by the same folks. The street is narrow. At the best of times, today, it was even worse. And, and I just think it's, it's an appropriate place for a no parking ban.
Any other discussion, Councilor Bowles?
Yeah, I think that we last visited this issue when we reduced the speed to twenty-five miles an hour, was it? And that was appropriate. If you've gone out and driven that road, you know why that was appropriate. And I appreciate Councilor Lippman's concerns about people getting input before doing this, but I just think it's, it makes a whole lot of sense to just do it and get on with it.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna vote now on the main motion then, which is to, to approve a no parking area on both sides of Daisy Gardner Road from its intersection with Meredith Center Road to its intersection with Leyton Avenue. All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. All right, we have four votes yes, two votes no, the motion carries, and the no parking ban is the law of the land, so to speak. Third item is Weir's Action Committee requests to install historic signs on the boardwalk in conjunction with the Department of Public Works. And that is on page twenty-six of your agenda tonight, and who's going to take the lead on that?
Go ahead.
I can very briefly, this was a request from the Weir's Action Committee, of which you have representatives in the audience here tonight. You see renderings of the historical signs and the messaging that would be displayed. These will be back-to-back signs, so there'll be four signs erected, four sets of posts erected with a, with a placard on each, either side of the, of the posts, if you will.
The same one or a different one?
There'll be two posts, and there'll be one on this side, and when you walk around to the other side, there'll be one on the other side. Yeah, different one on the other side. So a set of four posts to cover these eight, eight here. This is through the WAC. They would work in, they're gonna be supporting the cost of the signs. They'll be working with Public Works Department, and Public Works will be working to locate them in appropriate places. I know Councilor Cheney has been involved, and certainly welcome his additional thoughts along with, if you have any questions, there are representatives from the Weir's Action Committee here tonight.
What's the council's pleasure? Any questions or comments before we get to making motions? No? All right, a motion would be in order to approve the installation of historical signs on the Weir's boardwalk in conjunction with the Department of Public Works as presented.
Make that motion.
Councilor Cheney makes that motion. Councilor Hosmer seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, our last item of new business has to do with Wyatt Park. It's on page thirty-six of your packet, and is a request to expend funds in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the Wyatt Park Playground account for irrigation of Wyatt Park. Is someone gonna make a presentation on that, or?
I think I would defer, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Haynes, as he was the one who initiated this and asked me about where we could identify some funding for that.
Councilor Haynes?
Sure, thank you. I'm not sure when we had this conversation, but I think it was back, back last winter that I discussed with Scott, and we specifically talked about Wyatt Park, and I remember back at the rededication that there was a comment made about the condition of the, the grass that were.
Yeah, I might have made that comment.
I was gonna say that, but you did. And I guess my feeling was, is that, you know, that's one of the most-used inner-city parks, and towards the end of July and August, it kinda looks a little ratty, not only because of the, of the lack of rain and proper irrigation and fertilization. So Scott and I both talked about it, and he said, "Oh, by the way, there's the money left from the Wyatt Park when they dismantled or decided that the association would no longer exist." I did, after Scott recommended, I did talk to Sally and Ralph Perrino, and they, they thought it was a good idea. Sally's only, and the reason I sent a letter to the Perrinos was because they were the only last people I could remember that were part of the association, cuz they lived right across the street.
Right across the street, yeah.
Yeah. And they really didn't have a problem with it. The only thing that they did suggest to me that, one of the things that they thought would improve the park greatly is smaller toys, smaller apparatus for smaller children in the park. And Sally had already talked with Amy about it at Parks and Rec, and Amy was going to look into the fact that if, if, if there was the proper space requirement for any more additional playground equipment, so. That was the recommendation, and that was the conversation that we had.
Okay, any questions for Councilor Haynes about what we're talking about? What area are we talking about irrigating? The whole park or part of?
The whole park.
The whole park?
Yep.
And we do have a quote, and we'll be looking to install it this spring in conjunction with the Memorial Park softball field irrigation, and both of these installations would also be compatible with what is needed for the central irrigation funding that the council approved last year, so that we can control some of the irrigation by laptop and computer and that type of stuff. So this will be fully functional to tie into that major irrigation upgrade as well.
Anything else? All right, Councilor Haynes moves to expend six thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from account number zero-one dash four-four-nine dash four-seven-nine dash zero-zero-three-one, Wyatt Park Playground for irrigation work at Wyatt Park. Is there a second? Councilor Lippman seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilor Haynes. Okay, unfinished business. First thing up is second reading of the cherished ordinance zero-two, having to do with building construction, Article Two, adoption of standards. And that is on, what did I say? Page thirty-nine is where the actual resolution is. So any questions of the manager or someone else who could speak to this before we get to motions? No? All right, so you see there on page thirty-eight, we have three proposed motions tonight, the first of which is to waive a reading of the ordinance and to read it tonight by title only. Will someone please make that motion? Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Hammel. Thank you. Very much appreciated. All those in favor of waiting, reading of the entire ordinance, please raise a hand. We have six votes in affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up would be to move a second reading of ordinance zero-two, amending Chapter one-nineteen of the Building Construction Ordinance, Article Two, Adoption of Standards. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Hammel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval on second reading, please raise a hand. We have six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. And lastly, a final motion to approve ordinance zero-two, amending Chapter one-nineteen, Building Construction, Article Two, Adoption of Standards. Councilor Hosmer raises it and makes that motion. Councilor Haynes seconds the motion. All right. Hopefully, this will be the last we have here of this ordinance for a while. All those in favor of final approval of ordinance zero-two, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Is that what this green folder is here? Happily sign that. Pass that on to the clerk, please. Thank you. All right, our final, oh, we got two more, I'm sorry. Request for sale of tax-dated property for less than charges due the city. This is on page forty of your packet tonight, and this, I believe, yeah, has to do with that Hill Street law we talked about earlier, right? Councilor, we had a, a bid of seven dollars and seventy-seven... Councilor, we had a, a bid of $7.77 and now we've upped that to 2,000. Any discussion or questions to ask of the city manager before we, Councilor Lippman?
Can you refresh my memory at least in terms of why it's appraised at 23 for the land value and accept, opposing except two?
Because technically the lot is a buildable lot because of where it is in its acreage, but it would be an extremely challenging lot to construct anything on. I think that's probably why it was, in essence, abandoned and the city took it for tax purposes a number of years ago. The first time we attempted to sell it, we received no offers on it. The second time, the high bid was $7.77 that the mayor referenced and our recommendation was that we reject that. This time, it's $2,000 is the high bid. We had a total of three bids. The other two bids were in the $1,300 range, so obviously I think enough sets of eyes have looked at it because it didn't hit the minimum threshold of taxes and fees that were due, which is a little over $6,500. The process is that it needs to come to the city council to, in order to approve the sale of it for less than what is owed on it. And staff recommendation is to, please, let's move this along and take the 2,000. Whether somebody chooses to build on it, it is in a butter, is my understanding. Whether they choose to, you know, do a lot line adjustment and incorporate it into their property or keep it as a standalone lot, I don't know. But staff recommendation is that we sell this and receive the high bid on it.
So Hill Street is appropriate, is that what you're saying?
This particular lot, yes.
Any other questions, Councilor Lippman?
It's possible to condition it upon, I mean, just leaving it as an abandoned lot to, to condition it upon one of, either going to use it for some purpose or make a lot line adjustment?
I think that would be the intent, and so it, it still would be a vacant parcel of land, but it is in a butter. Not that I'm trying to give legal advice, but my take on it would be that if they leave it as a buildable lot with the acreage there, that we would continue to tax it as a buildable lot at the assessed valuation versus somebody doing a boundary line adjustment and blending it in and combining it with their existing lot, in which case we're more or less taxing just one buildable lot as opposed to what would be a separate lot. So I think it would probably behoove the potential purchaser to do that on their own. If not, the city would continue to receive revenue based on it being a buildable lot. But it is in a butter, is my understanding, who is the high bid. So I think there certainly is some ownership. It's not just someone buying a vacant lot in the middle of a neighborhood that they have no other vested interest in.
All right, a motion would be in order to approve the sale of tax-dated property on Hill Street, map 37, 1 slash 106 slash 49 to the high bidder in the amount of $2,000. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Valens, second? Councilor Cheney seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries and congratulations to the new owner, whoever he or she may be. All right, the last item of unfinished business tonight is downtown parking modifications. That starts on page 45 of your packet and runs back from that, including a map on page 48. And before I recognize the city manager on this subject, I wanted to say a couple of things. The first of which is at the bottom of page one of the report, which is page 45 of your packet, it lists the purpose of the proposed changes. And I think at the last meeting we discussed this, that was not thoroughly and properly addressed as to why we're, why this proposal is being made. And so I want to accentuate tonight that there are two primary reasons. One is traffic calming on those two busy thoroughfares to make those thoroughfares more pedestrian-friendly and more bicycle-friendly than they are now. So that's purpose number one. Purpose number two is to increase the number of parking spaces available downtown. So I just want to make sure everybody understands whether they're for this or against that, that those are the two primary reasons why this proposal is being made. The second thing I want to mention, because this needs to be taken all in context, I think, is, and Ms. Henderson alluded to this earlier with her suggestion that this parking issue be viewed in a broader context than simply changing to diagonal parking and adding some parking spaces on those two streets. And toward that end, I want the council to be aware of the fact of two things. The first of which is that at our next meeting on April 22 on the agenda is going to be a proposal to start charging a fee for all-day parking in downtown Laconia on city-owned property. Okay? So keep that in mind. This is a proposal that will, again, will be coming to you at the next meeting to start it out. And that proposal, the details we'll discuss at the next meeting, but in broad strokes is a, a, and the issue there is to address what is an obvious shortage these days of all-day parking spaces in downtown Laconia. And one only would have to come out to the city hall here at 8 o'clock in the morning before our workers in the city are largely at work and see that this parking lot out here is full, before our city workers even show up. And, and so the proposed solution to, to regulating that, as I said, will come before you at the next meeting, is a proposal to go to a permit system where you would need to buy a permit in order to park in an all-day parking space in downtown Laconia. So keep that in mind when we're discussing parking spaces and whatnot. And, and the second item that I need to bring to your attention tonight, not for, for resolution, but to make you aware of it, because it relates to this whole parking issue. This has to do with the Colonial Theater property. And as you know, from previous briefings on this subject, the, the Oversight Committee decided some months ago to take the restoration, renovation, whatever you want to call it, of the second and third floors of the Main Street building, part of the Colonial Theater complex, out of the restoration budget, which was going to reduce it by more than $2 million, the budget by more than $2 million. So, so as of today, the second and third floors of the main building, which used to be small apartments, is, is out of the budget. And there is no plan for developing that property as part of the Colonial Theater Restoration Project. However, as I briefed you earlier, it is the intention of the developer, which is Bell NAP Economic Development Council, to try to sell or lease those two floors to a third party and have a third party develop that space, which is about 15,000 square feet, on a, on a, on their own dime, so to speak. So that renovation theoretically, if it happened anytime in the next seven or eight years, would not be part of the Colonial Restoration or part of the budget for that restoration. So the good news is, is the committee has been able to attract the interest of a very reputable Lakes Region developer who is interested in either leasing or purchasing those two floors from Bell NAP Economic Development Council and developing them into eight apartments. So there's two floors there, so it'd be four apartments on each floor. Basically, the space would be quartered on each floor for a total of eight apartments. And one of the stipulations for this developer becoming involved in this process is a request on the, the prospective developer's behalf that the city dedicate 16 parking spaces, two per apartment, to exclusive use of the residents of those apartments. And so they, and, and those 16 parking spaces would come out of this lot adjacent to City Hall and some combination of this lot out here and the Main Street lot between Pleasant Street and Main Street. So, and they would be willing to pay some fee for renting that space on a long-term basis. Okay? And I mean like 50-year basis sort of thing. So in other words, the, the bottom line here is the potential developer of those 14 upscale apartments, because they'd be large apartments. Stipulation of the interest on the part of that developer is that, that, that he would have to have parking for his tenants. Or if they get eventually sold off as condominiums, the condominium owners would need to have some parking. And so those options are very limited. And so the request is that the city lease to this person at a rate to be determined, 16, a total of 16 parking spaces in those two lots. So you have the numbers before you tonight on how many lot, how many spaces there are and that sort of thing. Now, tonight, that matters. So what I need from the council tonight, what Councilor Hamel and I need, as the representative, your representatives on that committee, is not a final determination on whether we would do that or at what rate or whatever, but simply a, a, a sign of consensus or no consensus from the members of the council that this is something that is worth pursuing on our part, that we would be willing to enter into negotiations with this potential developer. That it's, so put another way, Councilor Hamel and I need to know now whether, if this is a no, no starter. If this has got no chance of passing the council, then, then we need to know that now so we can notify the potential developer that it's not going to happen. Councilor Lippman?
You have my support.
Anyone else? Anyone object to the concept?
I don't object to it.
Go for it. Okay. Thank you. I will pass that word on and, and we certainly, obviously, as we work out the details and if this, obviously it's not a guarantee at this point that this is going to happen, but as this proceeds, at least we will know that the council has no immediate objection to this and is, sounds very supportive in fact. And we'll, we'll come back to you with a specific proposal once that negotiation has taken place.
No, I do so enjoy it.
Okay, so we're on to the general staff report here about the motion, about the proposal for Beacon Street West and Beacon Street East that's before us tonight. And who's going to address that?
I'll address it briefly and then we've got folks here who can answer questions if there are. But this was driven out of a, out of a Land and Buildings Committee on, I believe it was, on the parking garage topic back probably late last year. We broached the idea we could look at something for the council to add some additional parking spaces that are relatively inexpensive dollar amount to create them and do, as the mayor mentioned, traffic calming and being able to add to the inventory of two-hour parking and all-day parking in the downtown. We floated this once, it did go to the Highway Safety Commission, as Mr. Stamps had said earlier tonight, and it was unanimous support there. We certainly heard the feedback about a bump out not being appropriate on the soda shop side, if you will, of the, of the crosswalk area there. So the revised map shows one full set of bump outs on Beacon West and a half a bump out, if you will, in two places that line up with the angled parking. Again, the total cost of, of this is $66,000. It's not permanent in the sense that it's, it's not making any major changes that can't be undone relatively easily if at a certain time in the future. Folks said this isn't for us for whatever reason, but it does create a significant number of parking spaces at a really small expense. And the timing wise for the, where we are in the season right now, starting to sweep the streets and doing line painting is really to be looking to incorporate this in now if that was the will of, of the council. Not saying the bump outs would be there on day one, but we certainly could stripe in and mark out, you know, some, some hashtag area type of things as to where the bump outs are going. And I believe our Public Works Director, Wes Anderson, had indicated probably the Beacon Street West bump outs would be the priority. So that's it in a nutshell. You have the number of spaces that this would create. Many communities do angled parking and do it successfully and have for years. I understand the concern of this being new. We, none of us believe on staff that the traffic volume there is going to get bottlenecked in any way, shape or form because of one travel lane versus two travel lanes, either on east or west. But again, there is nothing of here of a permanent nature that couldn't be reversed relatively inexpensively with some grinding of lines and some repainting. So Wes is here, I'm happy to answer questions or he is, if council has any.
Councilor Hamel?
Thanks, Scott. On Beacon East, you know, I don't oppose the idea, but if it's going to be like a trial and error type thing, I would like to see that the bump outs be held off for now and not built until we can determine if it's going to work or not.
Sure.
If it works, then we can put them in. If it doesn't, then we don't have the bump outs to take out.
We can do a temporary, a painting or something and just stripe where they are and, you know, I don't want to say we would stick a barrel or cones there and just have an eyesore, but we could just do some painting and, and try to identify that, you know, as best we can, that that's a, you know, pedestrian standing area, but we will certainly look for safety first on that.
Okay. On Beacon West, I'm, I'm still not thrilled about the angled parking there, basically because of the way, the speed around those corners. You know, and where you show that starting is right in that corner, you know, either you got to pull it way back further, you know, down the road further to start the angled parking, because I think that's going to be pretty dangerous right there on that corner if you have that angled parking right, right at the curve itself. I'd almost not be in favor of the Beacon West angled parking for now.
And it's not an all or nothing. I can tell you, we've worked with our engineers on this and there certainly would be, in addition to where the parking spaces are, there would be some line striping prior to that to be narrowing in early on. We certainly would have signage there about, you know, change of lane pattern or new, new lane pattern ahead and that type of stuff to do it. But it wouldn't just be somebody coming around and all of a sudden, there's no warning to it. There would be lines directing that it's fading and, and we would make every effort. But again, it does not have to be an all or nothing concept on this.
Okay. You know, it's obviously if it's angled parking, that car's going to have to back up into the lane, the travel lane. So that's my concern, especially how close it is to the corner itself.
Understood.
Councilor Lippman?
I share Councilor Hamel's concerns.
I'm sorry?
I share Councilor Hamel's concerns.
Councilor Hosmer?
I, I share the concerns as well, particularly on Beacon Street West. Just looking at the proximity of those angled parking spaces to that corner where people are going to naturally be drawn to the right-hand side of the road coming around the corner if they're going a little too fast. I think that's really problematic there. I am not a fan of angled parking at all. I realize as someone who parks downtown every day, seemingly, sometimes it's tough to find a parking spot. And I realize we should find a way to alleviate this. But on the other hand, angled parking, I just, I can't stand it. I, I think it's dangerous. I think whether it's downtown Concord or it's downtown Laconia, when you're backing out and you can't fully see to your left, you are just taking a gamble and hoping someone doesn't come rolling up, up the street and into you. I'm, I'm just.
Could I?
Not, I'm, I'm opposed to angled parking.
Okay. Could I make a suggestion that addresses the concerns you all have had? And I, the city manager and I have discussed this. I think the last time we mentioned this, I, I brought up the subject of, of the parking spaces that are there now. The parking spaces that might be there in the future don't safely lead anywhere. They don't now, and, and we have no plan to, to, to rectify that.
You're talking the Beacon West spaces at this point?
Beacon West spaces, yes. In the sense that on the one side you have a cliff that leads down to a, a building that's quite a bit lower than the actual street. And there are no crosswalks, presumably therefore, most people who would park there are going to go to the east toward downtown. And there's no safe crosswalk there within 100 yards or at least 100 yards of, of that area. However. However, the, I have two possible mitigating, in my mind anyway, things about that space there that I would, I would throw out there for your consideration. One is that, that I would recommend, if it were me, that those spaces be designated as all-day spaces because they're not the kind of spaces that would, in other words, they would be used for employee parking for downtown employers, which I think we, as I said earlier, we are in desperate need of at this point in time. So, that would be my recommendation, meaning that there would be fewer issues there from a safety standpoint because people would be hopefully parking there all day under a permit issued by the city and therefore, they would not be in and out and would know to be able to avoid, you know, there's that one time period of the day now where it's dangerous in that area. I think we all recognize that. And that's when the plants empty out up on Lexington and whatnot and people head for Belmont or wherever, by far the busiest time of the day in that early afternoon hours. The second thing I had brought up, and this may terrify you, Councilor, even more than the original proposal, but an article I read recently addressing this very issue or these very issues suggested reverse diagonal parking. In other words...
Confused.
Okay. So, you have an angled parking space. This has kind of become a thing now. You have, so you would drive past the space and back into it. So that when it comes time to leave, you don't have to back out into the road. You just pull straight ahead. You look over your left shoulder for oncoming traffic and pull straight ahead. This is sort of an avant-garde, new concept that's being experimented with around the country.
It's actually been around for a number of decades. And the other safety thing to it, when you think about it, if you're opening your doors on a reverse angle and parking, you're blocking kids from running into the street. If you're putting something into your hatchback or your trunk, you're doing it from the sidewalk as opposed to walking around into lane of traffic. So, not a lot of communities have adopted it, but the concept has certainly been around.
There are some countries, Australia comes to mind, where it's very common that you have angled parking, but it's back, you back into the angled parking. We have one case here in town where the parking lot, the new parking lot up at the community college uses that concept. If you come into the community college and you park on the right-hand side, that's reverse angle back-end parking.
You threw me off with the avant-garde.
Anyway, it's an idea. But that, to me, would alleviate, especially if you're dealing with all-day parking. To me, that would alleviate the issue of safety because it would be very easy to simply pull out into traffic then without having to back into it.
Yeah.
It might be worth a try.
That's not a bad idea. Is it?
I guess I'm just fundamentally concerned. Coming on the east side, you can go through the gut or you can come around the east side. On the west side, you just, it basically is going to block the road. I'm just concerned about that.
Councilor Haynes.
Not, Councilor Bones. Sorry.
Councilor Bones, then we'll go to Councilor Haynes.
I think we should try this. We're not rolling the dice forever. We're looking at possibilities. I understand everybody's concerns about angled parking or reverse angle parking. You know, we've been doing angled parking in the downtown for how many years now? And it's a pain sometimes, I agree, but, you know, we've been doing it. This has the potential for providing a lot of benefit in terms of parking spaces. It has the potential for, I don't think it's going to create much of a traffic jam, but we'll know. We'll know. I mean, you know, what you can do is if you're concerned about this with Beacon Street West, if you don't want to do reverse angle parking, you can just not stripe, you know, a hundred feet in. And you just see how that works out. And if it works out, you can just experiment with it. But we ought to give this a try. It's effortless. It doesn't raise any safety issues in my mind immediately. And it's the kind of thing that we just should say, "Look, this may work. Let's try it." So, and there's no financial risk involved. I mean, if we don't do the bump-outs right away, we save sixty-six thousand dollars. That's, that's de minimis anyway, as far as I'm concerned. But it's worth the effort to see how it works out.
Councilor Haynes.
The parking, I, either way, I could, maybe we should try that. But however, I'd be remiss. I have a number of constituents that are residents at Landing Lane. And there's two points from them.
Residents of where?
From Landing Lane, from, with the Allen Rogers. They're concerned about the speed. And I don't care what Representative St. Clair says, and I was paying attention to him. That's the speed, that's more than thirty miles an hour at some point in time. And they're also in favor of the bump-outs. They want to be able to cross there, go downtown without taking their lives in their hands.
And that's a dangerous place to cross.
Right. It is. It's a long, terrible place to try to cross.
It is.
I should point out that the bump-outs on Beacon West could occur without the parking change because you already have the turning lane to go onto Water Street at that point. And you don't go to three lanes until you get through that area. So, bump-outs for safety reasons could occur even if we didn't do anything with angled parking or reverse angled or just left it parallel.
But that wouldn't address the traffic calming issue.
Wouldn't do any traffic calming except for that one point is, you know, it narrows it a little bit just visually.
You know, anybody who's ever stood at that crosswalk waiting for a chance to cross is pretty scary.
And I think the spaces that are currently on Beacon West that you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, there's, if I'm reading my charts correctly, there's eleven spaces there right now that are all-day. So, what is there is all-day as it stands.
Right. And they're primarily used by bank employees who walk across the street to work. I mean, I think that's pretty well-known. All right. So, on page forty-seven of your packet, there is a proposed motion that comes with this proposal. So, anyone is, it would be appropriate at this point in time for anyone who cares to, to move that?
I do.
Motion or to move a version of that with changes?
I'm going to move the motion, I'm going to move the motion in full. I'm okay with any kind of amendments in terms of how we approach it or some directive to the city manager about how we go about this in a slow fashion to see how it develops and amenable to all of this. But this is a good idea. It might work. We can go at it slowly and see how it works out. And if it doesn't, we can stop. So, I'm going to move the full motion.
Does your motion include the reverse?
No, but I'm going to leave that for the future. My motion includes the concept with the caveat that I think the city manager was here, was listening, understands what the concerns are, and he'll approach it in that fashion. So, if we want to consider reverse angle parking in the future, we can do that. And that's an easy enough change. If we want to do the bump-outs on Beacon Street West now, we can do that. We're not in a hurry about that. Scott's got a question about it and the manager's got a question about it. You can come back to the council and ask him. But we ought to move forward on this as it is and just take it slow.
All right, Councilor Haynes, Councilor Haynes.
Councilor Bones.
You guys need to change chairs, I think, here. Councilor Bones.
You know what you're confused about?
Make some motion.
I'm sitting to your right and that's just, just doesn't sound right.
You're always to my right.
He shouldn't be to the left.
There is no chance in hell that he's to your right.
All right. Councilor Bones moves the approval of the plan presented tonight for constructing bump-outs and changing the travel lanes on Beacon Streets East and West per Public Works proposal, as well as the approval of the proposed distribution of spaces between two-hour and all-day parking. And we didn't even talk about this, about the parking garage.
The parking garage allocation is not changed. I only talked about what's written there. So, on Beacon East, the two-hour would be the first stretch from the entrance to the garage up to the first entrance to the mill here. And the remainder of the spaces down toward the post office would be all-day spaces.
Okay. The proposed distribution of spaces between two-hour and all-day parking as presented in the parking garage and on the two streets in question. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second, I guess.
I'm sorry. Councilor Haynes, are you seconding the motion? All right. Councilor Haynes seconds the motion. Discussion. Councilor Hamel.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay. Amendment would be in order.
That the bump-outs on Beacon East are not put in.
I consider that a friendly amendment.
Okay. And then that the bump-out on Beacon Street West is put in. And that we try the reverse angle parking on that side.
Get a second because I consider that a friendly amendment.
I consider that a friendly amendment.
Would you consider that a friendly amendment?
Because if you're going to paint the lines and we want to try this, you don't want them going one way and then you're going to turn them and put them the other way. So, you can try it. If it doesn't work...
Be bold. So, you're accepting this, you're accepting this as a friendly amendment?
I am.
Are you accepting it as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
You seconded it, right? All right.
Councilor Hamel, I never knew you to be avant-garde, but I guess you are. I'm shocked.
Say the phrase.
All right. So, Councilor Hamel proposes to amend the motion to say, to say that, clerk, you're going to help, help me here. Madam clerk, to say that the immediate construction of the bump-out on Beacon Street West, right, proceed. And that the proposed bump-outs on Beacon Street East be approved in concept only?
No.
What do you want that to say?
We can prove that a later date.
Approved at a later date.
If.
So, do you want them chalked now, so to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, the chalk won't hurt, I guess.
You know, in other words, delineated in some way on the street, but not with an obstacle.
Yeah. The plow guys will like that, too.
All right. So, how are we going to word that? We're going to say that you understand what he's getting at, right? All right. So, we're delaying construction of those bump-outs, correct? But they can, they can be painted or delineated. And then the second part is to change the proposal for parking on Beacon Street West to reverse angle parking.
And sign properly, yes.
And sign properly.
That there's reverse parking ahead or whatever they decide.
All right.
Danger.
So, somebody's...
We are on the cutting edge tonight.
But you're saying only on Beacon Street West?
Correct.
Not on east?
I would have preferred to seen both Beacon East and West.
Reverse?
Yes.
Nah. Oh, I don't care. I really want to approve, approve the concept.
Okay, wait a minute. Councilor, Councilor Hamel has the floor here. We're waiting for his, he's the maker of the motion.
I think I'd like to try it on Beacon West first. Let's see. You have, you have one of each. We can, later on, after the summer, we can pick the one that works the best.
It just occurred to me that we're, a number of these spaces are all-day parking spaces on east.
Yeah, we know who's going to take all those right away.
Yeah. So, having them park once like that a day is not going to create havoc over there. I just, I think we ought to try it all.
Be more on avant-garde.
I'm sorry?
So, I don't have a problem. If you want to do that, that's fine.
I would like to, I'd like to just...
All right. So, the motion...
You can always go back.
The amendment now entails reverse angle parking on both streets. Correct? Councilor Hamel?
Bob, go with your gut. I'm okay.
I was going to say no.
I was going to say no.
No, 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 no.
It's like a quiz show here.
This is like, this is exciting times as the Laconia City Council. Come on.
Now, why not?
Why not? All right. So, that's the motion. And you seconded it?
I do.
All right. Does everybody understand what we have on the floor now? We have an amendment to the main motion with those two caveats. One dealing with changes, one dealing with the construction of bump-outs and the other dealing with reverse angle parking instead of regular angle parking. Okay? Any discussion of the amendment?
Yeah, and I consider that a friendly amendment, by the way.
Well, we already seconded it.
I thought you'd already signed off on it. My apologies. All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have five votes in affirmative, one negative, the most the amendment carries. So, now we have the amended motion on the floor, which I would prefer not to read in its entirety.
Oh, we motion for that, were you?
Is there a second?
Quickly.
Councilor Cheney seconds the motion. All right. Do we all understand what we're voting on now? We're basically voting on the amendment over again, is what we're doing here. All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have five votes yes, one vote no, the motion carries.
Wait till Charlie hears about that in the morning.
Thanks, thanks for the discussion. Good. Council comments. Councilor Hamel.
I have a quick comment. I think I showed this to some people, but Laconia made it in a national magazine and it's quite complimentary. It's, I don't know if I can show the name of the magazine, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. It's Roadrunner Magazine. It's a national magazine and it's based on touring around the country. And these people go to different sections of the country and the world and do what they call cloverleaf tours, which is they'll pick a home base and do four tours off of each one. And right in the middle, it says, "Laconia, New Hampshire Shamrock Tours, Autumn Leaves." And they were here, they stayed at the Half Moon Motel. I don't think he even knew they were there. But they toured all of the Lakes region, the mountains. They went over towards the Clamont area. They went from east-west and north and south. But it's a very nice article about Laconia in the New Hampshire area and the things to do. They went to the Union Diner. And then it shows the tour they did throughout the whole state. So, it's very complimentary of Laconia and New Hampshire. And in this magazine, you wonder why maybe the decrease in amount of people come to Laconia. And if you looked at this magazine, they do tours across the whole country from Kansas to Wyoming, everywhere. And then the states will advertise their roads in their state. You know, like you've got Tennessee Road Trip, they'll do the Blue Smoky Mountains.
Probably ninety percent of which you've been on.
I've been on a lot. You know, and then, you know, the Back of the Dragon, the Tail of the Dragon, the Windy Nine from Ohio. I mean, these people advertise to death to get motorcyclists to go to their state and ride the roads. So, when you have that, people pick a place to go. But they go to Morocco, I mean, I'd love to do that one. But, you know, it's Australia.
So, what month is that? What edition is that?
It's a bi-monthly thing. This one's April.
April?
Yeah. And, you know, if you want to read it, you're welcome to. And I like it back, though, but...
I'm going to go buy it.
Yeah. And at the end, what they do is they make a cardboard map of each day. And there's one on the backside and you just rip it like a card and then you put that on your bike and you tour with that map. So, but that's the first time I've seen up this way. And I've been, I've had this magazine for a long time now, a lot of years. So, it's very complimentary. It's nice.
Other council comments?
I think just briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Certainly, I think many of us read the article in the newspaper about the open water rescue firefighters made just recently with someone who was on an ice float, which I think was just an extraordinary story to read and, you know, just a small indication of what kind of community we live in here, that they went to such great effort to get out onto the lake in dangerous conditions on a moving float, ice float, to rescue somebody. So, I just, I was thinking of them and thinking of that article. Very good article and extraordinary service from men and women on the firefighting service.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Forgive me for not looking at you. I'm always looking at Councilor Cheney when it comes to...
You never know what's going to happen over there. That's why, yeah.
He won't let me go home.
He won't let me go home.
I'm very disappointed if, if he doesn't have something to offer, but apparently not tonight, Councilor. All right. If no other business to come before the council, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at nine-ten P.M. Thank you.